You hear me? Oh, there we go. I don't want to eat the mic. It's five o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And as folks are getting to their seats, can everybody rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Pantera?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Dr. Lim is not in attendance this evening. Ms. Wani?
Here.
Next on the agenda is approval of agenda, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg. Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests, this evening, items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting, but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the Governing Board received the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the Governing Board may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. Any member of the audience who submitted a blue public card prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized to speak on that agenda item under items for approval. President Greenberg, I would like to offer the agenda as posted with one change. Several questions came up regarding consent item F8, and so I would like to have that pulled, and we'll work on those questions and bring it back on the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. Prior to the meeting, we received no blue public comment cards, so no member of the audience wants to pull anything. Does any member of the Governing Board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda, Mrs. Christensen?
F10.
F10? Okay, so that will move to the last item on items for approval. Are there any others? Seeing none, so that becomes G8. Does anybody else? Nope. Seeing none, Mrs. Christensen may have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is governing board statements. Mr. Pantera?
Thank you, President Greenberg. It's been a great few weeks for me, getting calls from old friends. I went to Eagle Ridge because, you know, our flags at all our schools, when they get worn out, they need to be retired and taken care of. And they knew I was old scout master, and they know remember the elk said, Tony, would you, can you help us with the flag? Sure, I'll come on by and pick them up, take them to Elk's Lodge, they got a troop there, they'll retire them properly. But when I was there, I got to see all the new furniture they were getting. It was really great, all these boxes stacked up of the new stuff and all the old furniture looking really sad out there in the courtyard area. It was fantastic. And I wanted to see my ma, she's, lives on Utopia, right by Quail Run. I go by the, I go by Quail Run all the time. I saw out there all this new landscaping that was going in. Again, it's beautiful, you see these, this rejuvenation of the schools everywhere you go this time of year. My running club, every year, they do a fundraiser, and this year, I was in charge of it. So I said, well, you know, let's do something for the schools. I did something for my old alma mater, Ho Ho Com Elementary School in Scottsdale. When I was there, it was kindergarten to eighth grade, now it's only K6. So I went to visit the school, you know, you talk to the people, let them know which is the PTA we want to send the money to, all that kind of thing. And I noticed how wonderful it looked. I guess a couple of years ago, it got renovated. They redid the whole thing. I loved it, it looked really fantastic. It was like this beautiful gem in the middle of the neighborhood. They even kept some of the old stuff, though. They have, they used to have these plaques for students, you know, or for staff that had passed away or whatever, and they retained that, they just moved to different locations. So they got the old and the new going there, and the neighborhood looked really good. I think it looked better than when I was a kid, and I was there when the neighborhood was new. It was really great to see. But the reason I bring that up and everything else is because I'm really looking forward to what's going to go on at Indian Bend. That school's going to be transformed, it's going to be a gemstone right there, right in the middle of the neighborhood, not only transforming that school, but the pride of the community around them, just like all the other things we do. Nothing like going to a school that's got the best equipment, that's got a new look, and you can tell they're dedicated to make the students feel better about where they are actually going to do this learning. I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera, Mrs. Christensen.
I would just like to welcome everyone in attendance today, both in person and online, and to congratulate our 2025 PV graduates. I was blessed enough to have participated in two graduation ceremonies, PV Online, which I was pleasantly surprised. I, back many moons ago, many decades ago, when I was in school, the, you know, we didn't have online school, but we would have alternate school for people that struggled. But these kids were amazing, and many of them, we even had one sophomore and one junior graduate as a senior with full credit, so that was amazing. And then the Shadow Mountain High, that was really special. We had a wonderful educator principal that has been in our district for many years, Principal Appleman, that retired and also participated with Dr. Reynolds. And so it was just a very special time, and I am really getting to know a lot of the Shadow Mountain High community, and they're just such a wonderful group. Having had my child come through Horizon, I was very familiar with Horizon, but I just want to say that that community at Shadow Mountain is just very special, so I was blessed to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen, Mrs. Wani.
So thank you for all in attendance on this super hot June day, and happy summer. And I hope for all of you who are, have been hardworking at the district, whether, you know, in any position that you're in, I hope you all get some respite this summer. I know we can all use it, so hopefully you'll find some of that in the days to come. And I just want to say thank you to staff, teachers, and some parents I see out here and community members for being here during the summer. It says a lot about your, how much you value the community and the school, so thank you for that. I too, as a brand-new governing board member, got to take part in my very first graduation, my first graduation where I wasn't the one graduating. It's a little different when you're up there. The only thing I would have changed is maybe I would have worn different shoes. They were fabulous in purple and black, like North Canyon, which was amazing, but also by like the 200th degree, I was like pretending that I was not going to fall over. But it was honestly such a joy and such an honor and such an inspiration, and like truly filled, I was exhausted, and I didn't even know how I was going to get through it after my workday. And when I tell you, like, it filled me up in a way I could not have imagined and like kept me going after that. And I mean that, like, with all sincerity, it was just truly a wonderful thing to be a part of. I kind of felt like, why do they want to see me and shake my hands? Like, I didn't know who the heck I am, but all of the students were just so gracious and adorable, and I might have, it might have been the first time they shook anyone's hand, actually, right? Because we don't do that so much, and so it was a very, just a very cool experience. So I'm very grateful to the North Canyon community for welcoming me there and letting me be a part of what a beautiful, awesome day. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wani. I too want to say hello to everybody. It's actually a big crowd for a summer meeting. I had the honor, along with Dr. Lindsay, of participating in both the graduation for Sweetwater Community College and for PV High School, and both were extraordinary. Sweetwater, I want to say it was 51 students walked, 53 graduating. That's incredible senior class for Sweetwater. And at PV, there were about 100 more students graduating this year than last. That's how much the senior class has grown.
Hopefully you wore better shoes than I did.
I wear flats almost constantly these days, so that helped. But, you know, just like the experiences everyone else had, it was enriching, fulfilling to hear from the students, to see our grads, to see how they made graduation their own by, you know, when you look at the caps and the designs and the cords and the, you know, the regalia and everything else that our graduates get to bring to the ceremony with them, it's just amazing. And it's one of the highlights always of being a board member, so I appreciate that we are allowed to participate like that. And that's my comments. There are no awards or recognitions this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Reynolds for superintendent comments.
Thank you, President Greenberg. Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests, again, in PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. One of these opportunities is our dual-language immersion Mandarin program. This immersion program offers students a unique opportunity to become fluent in Mandarin Chinese while also developing a deep understanding of the culture. Our Mandarin immersion program is very impressive. Students spend half the day learning in English and the other half learning in Mandarin, helping our students prepare for the future by learning a language that's in high demand. Recently, one of our students, Kina Shaw, competed at the Mandarin competition in Los Angeles and won the Most Creative Award. Judges were very impressed by his level of language proficiency, so congratulations to him. If you want to know more about the Mandarin program, check out the Whispering Wind Academy or Sunrise Middle School websites. Exciting news, PV Schools is currently featured in Business View Magazine, a digital publication that reaches over 870,000 executive entrepreneurs and small business owners globally. The eight-page editorial highlights how PV Schools provides excellence in education by offering students a broad spectrum of programs, including gifted education, the arts, athletics, and career pathways. We are honored to be included in this one-of-a-kind publication, and I want to encourage students, staff, and families to check out the latest issue by visiting businessviewmagazine.com. Recently, Gammage Auditorium hosted the High School Music Theater, Musical Theater Awards, and I am pleased to announce that Shadow Mountain High School and Horizon High School received significant recognition. Isabella Ross from Horizon High School earned the award for Excellence in Stage Management. Additionally, Shadow Mountain's production of Hades Town was recognized as Best Musical in Arizona, and student actress Kayla Trevino was selected as one of the three finalists to compete for the prestigious Jimmy Award. Congratulations to all of our student performers on a job well done. This year, over $52 million in scholarship funds were earned by our graduating seniors supporting their post-secondary education. While not all students report their financial awards, the amount reported is something to be incredibly proud of. Congratulations to all of our students who put in the hard work, dedication, and effort and earned these impressive awards. And finally, tonight, I would like to welcome Rochelle Miller, who will be the new Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Board Secretary starting on July 1. I am confident Rochelle will fit right in, and know she will be a valuable asset to PV Schools, so please help me in welcoming Ms. Miller. President Greenberg, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. Next on the agenda are our items for approval, and first up is consideration approval of Administrative Employment Personnel actions, Dr. Holmes.
Madam President, members of the board, Allison Rye is currently the Parent Involvement and Community Relations Specialist at Augur Free High School. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Arts Education from Mansfield University in Pennsylvania, Master of Arts in Arts Education also from Mansfield University, and a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from NAU. If approved, she will receive salary and benefits in accordance with the COA bargaining agreement, and we recommend you approve Ms. Rye to be the next Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you very much, Dr. Holmes. May I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Allison Rye for the position of Director of Fine Arts as presented, Mrs. Christensen?
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Mrs. Christensen?
I just wanted to comment on your beautiful artwork that you're wearing today, so it was very, very fitting. For those of you at home that can't see, she's got a beautiful floral print pattern and her beautiful earrings, so I stole your thunder, Jessica. Ms. Wani, so sorry.
Bringing a new definition for dressing the part.
There we go. Anybody else? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Rye.
Do you have any family or friends you want to introduce? Next time. Dr. Holmes?
Jorge Ontiveros is currently the Principal at Greenway Middle School. He earned a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Phoenix University and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from GCU. If approved, he will receive salary and benefits consistent with the PvP bargaining agreement, and we recommend you approve Mr. Ontiveros to be the next principal at North Canyon High School.
Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Jorge Ontiveros for the position of Principal of North Canyon High School as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment?
Jorge, also, you look lovely. Also, artwork.
Mr. Pantera?
No, I just, I remember, we worked together at Palomino all those years back, and back then, even then, I saw your dedication to the students and what you wanted to do with our craft of education, so I'm glad for you.
Everything he said, anybody else? Except I didn't work with you, you know. All those in favor, oh, yes, we had the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Would you like to introduce your family?
I have my husband, wife, and children, and then definitely all the families on Greenway, Canyon.
Jeremy Richards is currently the principal at the Scottsdale Christian Academy, specifically the high school. He earned a Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education from ASU, a Master of Arts in Educational Administration from NAU. If approved, he will receive salary and benefits in accordance with PvP bargaining agreement, and we recommend you approve Mr. Richards to be the next principal at Pinnacle High School.
Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Jeremy Richards for the position of Principal of Pinnacle High School as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment?
Well, you also look wonderful. Thank you, and your beautiful family. We love everybody, everybody looks great.
Everybody looks wonderful. Y'all look wonderful. Everybody.
Anybody else want to make? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Richards.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, and want to introduce us? Awesome. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of proposed fiscal year 2025-26 State of Arizona School District annual expenditure budget. Ms. Barrigan?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, and Governing Board. They don't want to stay.
We'll vamp while they...
Thank you.
We'll stay.
I appreciate that. Okay, so tonight, we bring you the budget proposal. Just as a reminder, we propose a budget, and then we adopt a budget at the next June meeting. That all has to be done prior to July 15th, but we don't have a July meeting, so we cram it all into June. And we will start tonight with some state budget highlights for K-12 education, revenue, and expenditure factors and assumptions, discuss what some of those budgets look like briefly, briefly, talk about my favorite part, property taxes, a little bit about truth and taxation, and then transparency and accountability. So to start with some highlights, because the legislature is still in session, if you didn't know, they're not done yet, but they must be done by June 30th, we don't have a budget, so this budget gets proposed without the state's budget being finalized, but there are some things we can assume, and right now, the, excuse me, the aggregate expenditure limit hasn't been overridden for fiscal year 26. If that doesn't happen in the budget, that would be 1.1 billion in cuts to school districts, probably somewhere in the range of $15 to $17 million for PV schools specifically. There's every confidence that that, whoa, what happened? There's every confidence that that will be included in the budget, though. Okay, in fiscal years 22 through fiscal year 25, the year we're currently in, if the legislature hadn't overridden the aggregate expenditure limit in those years, that's $5.1 billion that wouldn't be in funding for schools, so just want to kind of put some things into a little bit of perspective there. And then finally, another highlight, they have removed the free and reduced lunch percentage weight and the additional DAA. We expected that to happen, we knew that that was not in the budget for this year, but just wanted to remind everybody of that. In terms of some revenue assumptions, as always, or for those of you who are new, I include an average daily membership assumption that is higher than what we believe and what in our true operating budget we have planned for. As a reminder, average daily membership is the average number of days students are enrolled for the first 100 out of 180 days of school, and that is one of our primary factors in determining our MNO budget and our district additional assistance budget. We adopt that with a higher ADM than we are actually expecting, just so we don't lose out on any capacity in our MNO override when setting the tax rate. So we have to set the tax rate without knowing what our ADM is going to be, and our ADM is never final, as a reminder, until October of the subsequent fiscal year. And so because we have to make some of those assumptions, we put a little bit of additional ADM in there to ensure we don't lose out on that MNO override capacity. The other main factor in our MNO budget is that base level or per pupil funding that we receive, based off of where CPI or the inflation number is right now, we expect that we will get 2%. It's 2% or what the inflation factor is currently, whatever is the lesser, and right now, 2% is lesser of those two. So this current year, we're at $5,013 of base level amount per student, next year, it's estimated to be a little bit more than that, $5,113.26. The auditor general, when they released these temporary forms, since the budget isn't completed yet, they didn't include a line for Prop 123, presumably because the continuation of that hasn't been resolved within the state budget yet, and we have previously, on page seven, had a line for that where we would put that additional amount that's around $2 million. So that line's not on the budget, and I can't, I can't add a line into the budget forms and have the budget forms be accepted. So when a budget is solidified and in the budget revision that we do in December, my expectation is page seven will have a line added back in to include that Prop 123 amount. It's widely understood that that funding is going to continue, it's just via the general fund now instead of out of the state land trust where it has been coming from for 10 years. And then the final assumption is the classroom site fund per student funding, it increased by $50 per weighted ADM this year. Weighted ADM is our average daily membership that I talked about after we apply the weights for students. K-8 students have a weight, high school students have a weight, students with special needs have a weight, so it's our higher number of ADM, and that will move us from 792 per weighted ADM to 842 per weighted ADM. The next expenditure factor is really just a listing of the reminder of things we were able to do for staff this year, which was great. I won't go through all of those again, but effectively, it was 3% across the board, and the certified group chose to apply it in the way that's listed here, the edu- The education support professionals applied it slightly differently, and then PVA, PVP COA Cabinet and Executive Administrative Assistance applied just as a 3% flat increase, but effectively, it's the same across all of those groups. Additional expenditure factors that we talked about all throughout the winter and spring is the minimum wage adjustment that occurs every January. That was estimated at 3% in the budget. Again, that is the CPI as of August, which we will get released in the September timeframe. And right now, I have that estimated at 3% based off of where the CPI was at when we were in our bargaining meetings. The next is the inflation costs of goods and services, which were estimated at 1.3% this year, a utility cost increase of 5%, and then ASRS decrease, the only decrease, of 0.27%, and then the medical cost increase, that was 10%, but that was, as a reminder, covered by our medical prepay balance. So it wasn't necessarily picked up by district MNO fund, didn't have to be picked up by staff, it was picked up by additional balance that we have in medical prepay. This is just a review or a quick peek at some of our main funds and the amounts that the budgets are being proposed and adopted at for this year. So you see maintenance and operation at almost 253 million, classroom site fund at a little over 33 million, our Medicaid reimbursements remain consistent at around $9 million, indirect cost at about 4.3, and instructional improvement fund at 1.25. In terms of capital funds, our unrestricted capital budget is estimated to be at about 22.8 million, bond building at 72 million. Why? Because we're building a new school. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Pantera. I am excited, too. Adjacent ways at a little over $1 million. We'll continue to have our federal and state grants. Our federal grants, you will see, are a little bit lower than last year. Last year, we had up through September, or technically, it's still this year, through September of 2024 to spend out the balance of our final ESER, and that was paid out to staff in the one-time stipend before September 30th of 2024. So that was the last ESER funding that we have. It was a fairly significant amount of money, so that's why you see the federal funds decrease a little bit more this year. Then we have our debt service fund, that is the paying off of previous bonds that the district has had. Our community education department, expected to have a budget of about $9 million. Food services at, remaining at about $10 million. Insurance proceeds, a little over 200,000. We don't always have insurance proceeds, but sometimes a claim is paid back to us, and that is what that fund is for. And then a number of other funds that total a little over $28 million. Moving on to tax rates, it's always the thing I'm most interested on in my district where I live, and I have this current year that we're in, our actual tax rates for primary and secondary, along with our estimated tax rates for fiscal year 25-26. About 10 years ago now, it, maybe not quite that long, probably seven years ago now, it changed where the county actually sets our tax rates versus them being set by our district, so there is a little bit of a difference in that, but we provide them the numbers to be able to do that. The primary tax rate covers the MNO, district additional assistance, the things that aren't overrides, that are part of the calculation of the local tax rate, and so we will see a slight decrease in that rate next year, per $100,000 of assessed value to $3.014. The secondary tax rate includes our voter-approved initiatives of our MNO override, our capital or DAA override, and then our bonds, and you will see that those overall with the secondary tax rate are moving from slightly over $2 per $100 of assessed value to about $1.76. So the overall tax rate is decreasing by about 41 cents. Then moving on to truth in taxation, it's not my favorite thing to present on, but we are required to present on it, and I'm going to give a little more context to what actually has to be posted in a newspaper of general circulation within the district boundaries. So to start, since 1997, Arizona districts have been required to disclose to voters an intent to raise taxes for what's considered expenditures that are outside of the budget limits established in our funding formulas, meaning MNO, district additional assistance. And so for us, that, there's, there's other factors for small schools and things of that nature. The only one that applies to us is adjacent ways. And for fiscal year 25-26, this coming year, our levy, as I had mentioned, is $1,075,000. And just to put it in perspective, out of all of our budgets, that will total $483 million, that's only 0.22% of our total budget. So why there is this truth in taxation for such a small portion of our budget is confusing to many of us, but nonetheless, it's, it's a piece we have to comply with. In terms of the legal requirements, we have to post a truth in taxation hearing that we will have as part of the budget hearing for the June 19th board meeting. We have to publish a notice in a newspaper that includes the amount of the increase, as well as the date, time, and location of the board meeting. That was published today, June, June 5th, excuse me. Hold that public hearing to adopt the budget, and then that's why we do a roll call vote for that June 19th meeting. Is Rochelle doing that meeting? Roll call vote? No? You're doing that meeting. Roll call vote. Okay, you'll remember. Thank you. And then we do a notice to the Property Tax Oversight Commission of that hearing and the results of the vote for that. This is the notice of truth in taxation that was published in the paper. This is specific language required in statute, so we include all of that information in there. It notes that there is an increase of $2.23 on a $100,000 assessed value home, because we are required to include that in 1997, before this existed, that, that, there was no number, the number was $0. So it's a little bit misleading, which is why I include some additional information for context. The notice is for the one-time levy of the $1,075,000. That increase on that notice noted the $2.23, but our, this current year we're in, fiscal year 24, adjacent waste tax was $4.36 on a $100,000 home. So really, the difference between this current year we're in and the year that is coming up, that the budget adoption is for, is a little over $2.12. So it's not a decrease. It's a decrease, not an increase. And just to help put it in perspective, it, it's 18 cents per month, less, on a $100,000 home. Okay? And just as a reminder of the things adjacent ways can be used for, it comes to us in statute in 15995, and some of the pieces that I've put in bold there indicate some things that we do, like improving our public ways adjacent to any of our parcels, construction of sidewalks, sewer lines, utilities, fire lanes, roadways, and other related improvements to also ensure safe ingress and egress to our properties. Our projects that we'll be working on with these pieces are removal replacement and/or seal of asphalt at those first five schools noted, or, excuse me, four schools, and then our support services building where our transportation facilities and food and nutrition, whereas, primarily where our buses are at for that support services building. And that it also includes some pieces for the Indian Ben rebuild their fire lane and safe ingress and egress. And then finally, moving on to transparency and accountability, I often talk about how school districts are the most transparent organizations that I believe are out there. We have lots of opportunities for transparency. I offer any time that anybody can come and meet with me, and I'm happy to talk about them with any of the expenses or revenues that we receive. Nobody ever takes me up on that. But your, it's, the offer still stands. But this was a sheet that is actually a one-pager that we have available for people to review the transparency and accountability between districts, charters, and privates, and we've included private schools now, because they now can receive public funds, like districts and charters. You will note that districts have a lot of green check marks, charters have a few, and private have very little. I won't go over all of them again, but just a few that I want to point out. Districts are subject to Arizona Auditor General performance audits, whereas the others are not, as well as being part of the Arizona Auditor General Classroom Spending Report each year, whereas the others are not. And on this page, I would just point out the bottom row there, that school districts are required to follow the Arizona procurement rules. Districts are required, charter schools can get an exemption through the charter board and its sponsor, and about 80% of charters are exempt from following Arizona procurement And then finally, on the last page here, is that we are required to complete and submit the SDER, which is the School District Employee Report. Charters and private schools are not required to do that. We're required to track and submit our transportation data as well, and then comply with school facilities board or school facilities division minimum adequacy guidelines for our school With that, I am happy to answer any questions about the budget. I will go through, as a reminder, I go through this presentation all over again in two weeks. I'll go through it a little bit more quickly at that time, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Barrigan. Amazing, as always. Does any board member have any questions? Mr. Pantera?
Yeah, there's the expenditure item for community ed, right? For what, about nine, about 9 million or something?
Generally, our budget.
Doesn't generally, in the past, the community ed has generated more funds than we put out for them. Is that still true, that they, they bring a lot of money back in the district for some of the things?
Yep, they contribute, Mr. Panterius, they contribute about an additional million dollars towards our utilities each year. It's gotten a little tighter. We've bought, brought the community ed fees to the board in recent years, and will continue to have to do that just as we see inflation happen and as we see minimum wage increase. But it is a contributor and adds back to the district budget so that we can fund some, some other things out of there.
Yeah, I thought it was still the case, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay. I forgot, I needed to ask for a motion first, so may I please have a motion in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute 14905 to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 State of Arizona School District annual expenditure and revenue budget as presented, Mrs. Christensen.
So moved.
Okay, great. Now we can, you know, pretend that we're going to have that discussion again. I'm sorry, Mr. Panter, you got anything else you want?
Well, I noticed the inflation cost for goods and services, 1.3%, but that's not like the overall inflation the country's having right now, right? That's a different thing?
Yep, that is less. I talked about this a little bit when we were talking about budget in the winter and spring timeframe. In previous years, I had that inflation number the same as the CPI or the increase to minimum wage that we would have, but as I've seen, you know, we've been in an interesting inflation situation for a number of years, a little bit unique. As I've seen that start to trend out, we were not experiencing the amount of inflation on goods and services as was equal to what we would do for CPI, so I continued to monitor that throughout this year and compare that to previous years, and it seems like 1.3 is a little bit more, 1.3% is a little bit more accurate in terms of the increases we're seeing to goods and services.
Well, thank you. Thanks for answering that.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions? Or Ms. Swanee?
I just want to make sure, I have some, thank you. I just want to make sure I was understanding, and you did a great job, so my questions are about my limitations.
That's okay.
Not yours. Okay, so when we're talking about the truth in taxation, so just making sure I'm understanding everything that just went into that. So the budget for adjacent ways in the Arizona funding formula is $0.
Yes, that, there's no state funding provided for that at all. It is completely a tax to the local taxpayer.
So anytime any funding, any dollars were being spent on anything, that would be captured by statute under adjacent ways, we would need to follow this publication and hearing procedure.
Correct. If we spent $1, intended to spend $1 in adjacent ways, we would have to do a truth in taxation notice.
And this seems like a rare sort of thing that we would need to do, have, have an increase in taxes that were related to adjacent ways. Is that true?
No, it's possible that there's a year where, where we have more projects than we did in a previous year, and so the tax rate might be slightly more than the previous year in terms of an actual comparison versus the comparison that's in the truth in taxation notice. This year, we just happen to only need to levy a little bit more than $1 million, so you see that it's a decrease. Very likely, next year will be a year of an increase, because 1 million is the lowest amount that we've levied for in my time here.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it. It seems like maybe it might be time, you know, for some legislative updates, but I recognize that's, we're not here to discuss those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other?
One more question.
Mr. Pantera?
Yeah, when we publicize and put this out that we have to do by law, I mean, what does that cost a district to do that, you know?
I believe the notification was somewhere around $500.
$500 a pop every time we got to notify the public?
Yeah, each year, we, yes, we have to do that. That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Again, thank you. Always very thorough and very informative. All those in favor approving the proposed fiscal year budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of revisions to the Family Student Handbook for 2025-26. This is the second read, so it's up for approval. Dr. Corson.
President Greenberg, members of the Governing Board, cabinet and guests, tonight is the second reading of the Family Student Handbook. Dr. Chris Osmussen is joining us this evening to review those changes.
Good evening. President Greenberg, members of the board, Dr. Reynolds, cabinet, and members of our community, my name is Dr. Chris Osmussen, and I am pleased to present a second reading of the recommended revisions for the 2025-2026 handbook. Oops, it went too far. There we go. Tonight, I will present revisions to the handbook based on the recommendations and comments from the board on May 15th, 2025. After the May 15th board meeting, I reviewed the suggestions made by the members of the Governing Board, and then drafted revised language to the handbook based on those suggestions and presented them to cabinet for consideration. I consulted with legal counsel regarding the language on the release of students in that section, and then met with a proofreader. I then emailed a, the summary of proposed revisions to our committee members, seeking their approval, and the committee approved the proposed revisions on May 22nd, 2025. It was recommended that language defining regular attendance in that section, in Section 1, be more direct. That language was revised. It was recommended that language be added to the bullying, harassment, intimidation, hazing, and threats of harm section in general policies to ensure that students address, that when students address the person who is bullying them or targeting them with unkind behaviors, that they do that only if they feel safe in doing so, and that language was added to convey that message. It was recommended that language be added to the handbook to describe what happens when a community member does not adhere to the policy and practices of the district. While the suggestion was specific to what happens when parents and guardians do not adhere to the digital privacy guidelines, the language was added to the section on governing board policies stating that it is our expectation that all community members adhere to the board policy and that there are possible consequences for not complying. It was recommended that language surrounding court orders restricting student pickup be reviewed to ensure that we consider things like parenting plans and sole decision-making. Our legal counsel made the recommended changes to refine the language, which we are presenting to the board tonight. It was recommended that the committee verify the City of Phoenix codes, as they were recently revised, and the codes were revised in March of this year, and have changed the legal age to operate an e-bike or an electric scooter to age 16. Language in that section of the handbook was revised to align with the new codes. It was also recommended that we clarify chat under digital citizenship and student technology use as Google Chat, and that term "Google" was added to make that distinction. It was recommended that we clarify that the district is concerned for all students, not just student athletes, in the athletic participation section, and those changes were also made. If approved by the Governing Board tonight, a black line copy will be given to a proofreader who will review the document for formatting, grammar, and voice. In addition, Dr. Cummings' letter from the superintendent will be added, and the document will be given to translation to prepare a Spanish version. And then finally, both the English and the Spanish versions of the 2025-2026 Family Student Handbook will be uploaded to the district website. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Osmussen. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to submit? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. May I please have a motion to approve the revisions to the Family Student Handbook for 2025-26 as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions? Or Ms. Swanee?
I just want to say thank you so much. I appreciate it. I know how much work these committees put into it. I know it's a massive task. It's a lot of pages, there's a lot of content, it covers a lot of things, so I just, I really, really appreciate. So I just, I really, really appreciate everything you did, very much.
Well, thank you, it's part of the process.
Thank you, and that's why this is such a great process. We appreciate it, get the best possible outcome, thank you.
Mrs. Christensen?
I, I would like to echo Ms. Wani's statement and to thank you for the changes you made based on governing board input. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and Mr. Panter, do you have any comments? Okay, I echo everybody's thanks because it is a big job and there's always a lot. Nobody else has any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you again. Next on the agenda is consideration and approval of resolution number 575, memorandum of understanding between SLU?
Yes.
SLU?
You got it, yes.
SLU.
SLU.
SLU. And Paradise Valley Unified School District, Ms. Copan?
Thank you, President Greenberg and governing board. We recommend the approval of this MOU between SLU and our district. SLU is a virtual observatory that allows students to explore space through live telescope feeds. SLU agrees to provide the district with licenses for participating students and teachers, professional development and support, and program data for one year at no cost. This was awarded to our district through a competitive grant. And we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve resolution number 575, MOU between SLU and Paradise Valley Unified School District as presented, Mrs. Christensen?
So moved.
Does any board member have any com, Mr. Panter?
I have a question, now this is a one-year thing, right?
President Greenberg, Mr. Panter, yes, it's a one-year grant offered to us to explore the service, and then we'll collect data on how our classrooms use the tool.
So after the year, then if we want to continue, it's going to cost whatever the cost is for this, this program, right?
Correct.
All right, but it's not automatic?
No.
Okay, thank you. Not like my Netflix, which just goes where I want it to end up? All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Wani?
Thank you so much, I know you had already answered some of the questions that I have, but, and so thank you for that. So it's going to be offered to everyone, and I know that you, there have been, like, I guess, good fits, right? Sort of identified, recommend, like, the STEAM classes, that sort of thing that you provided that to me, thank you. This sounds like an awesome opportunity. So is it basically like, different, like, it's offered to everyone, and then the teachers will sort of, like, provide it in whatever capacity they just, they think is appropriate, integrate it into their teaching as, as a tool?
President Greenberg, Mrs. Wani, yes, the, it's specifically linked to Earth and Space Standards. So it's classrooms that are going to be teaching those standards. We're going to heavily integrate it into STEAM, K-6 STEAM classrooms. We anticipate, although this is not required, we anticipate that our STEAM teachers are going to highly use this tool. They have been asking for resources for, to support them specifically in this area as well. And then we have some high school courses as well that directly link, and we think our science teachers are going to be very excited about the opportunity to get to use a tool like this in the classroom.
And then, and so, and it also includes support, training, so that if it is something that ends up, everyone loves it, we are kind of ahead of the game a little bit next year.
Okay, correct.
Thank you.
That's great.
Does anybody else have any other questions, comments? I just want to say I appreciate that we go out for grants and, you know, are able to bring things to the district through that process. So thank you very much for that. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action to submit policy priorities for inclusion in the Arizona School Boards Association 2026 political agenda. So we did have a discussion last meeting and came up with the five. So we are asked to reaffirm five priorities from the previous, from the 2025 agenda for 2026, and then if we desire to propose new priorities for 2026. So based on the discussion from our previous meeting, everybody should have in front of them, that we reaffirmed priority regarding maximizing state funding as listed under the adequately and equitably funded district schools section, to under preserve, respect and strengthen local control regarding changing language for override budget increases and opposing legislation that lessens or curtails local control in essence to approve curriculum. The fifth one was from improve opportunities and outcomes for students, and that is redefine the role and purpose of standardized testing and develop meaningful assessments and other measurable outcomes. And the fifth was under federal advocacy for fully funding individuals with disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. And then building on the conversation, the proposed new priorities that we would submit would be to promote and fund programs to increase academic achievement in K-12 education, for example, Project Momentum, ACT prep, et cetera, and to ensure standardized testing and assessments are aligned with other states for improved national comparisons. So that's what we discussed. Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to submit the priority issues for consideration for the 2026 ASBA political agenda and designate Ms. Chisman to enter this mission on behalf of the governing board as discussed?
So moved.
Do any board members want, Mr. Panter?
Yeah, I remember having that discussion, but I thought one of the things we were talking about for a new proposal was a consideration, ensure consideration of lifting the aggregate expenditure limit not be linked to any bill, other bills or legislation. I thought we were going to add that one too, as a new thing. I remember we talked about it, I hope you remember we talked about how I thought that was important.
Yeah, I thought we did, I, no, not I thought, yes, I think we talked about different things. This is what I had in my notes, so if, if you're remembering different, I will turn to my other fellow board members here and, and ask, is that?
That's, it's not, my point is, really, would it be okay if we added that as a third one?
Ms. Chisman, do they provide us the ability to add a third?
Oh, okay.
Ms., Ms. Wani?
That, was that one of the five priorities that was already there? So what, if we were going to have it, wouldn't it be in the top five, not a proposed new one?
Well, it's a different, because this talks about lifting it, the other one above talks about repealing it, sending it to the voters. If you look at it, it says, um-
Oh, I have it right in front of me.
Repeal the constitutional aggregate expenditure limit via legislative referral to the voters. It talks about repealing it. This is something separate, this, well, they, we need it lifted, right? We talked, it was in the budget presentation, how much it would cost if it's not lifted. So this is just about lifting it without trying to tie it to other bills, you know, hold, held hostage. You know, we want to lift this, but oh no, we got to vote for all these other terrible things to get the thing we need. So that's why I thought that the new language might be ensure consideration of lifting aggregate expenditure limit not be linked to any other bill or legislation, might be a, a new thing to add. It's for your consideration.
Yeah, I understand now.
Ms. Christensen?
I just think on that point, it gets lifted every year, so I, I prefer to keep what we have here. And I, if I remember correctly, when we had the discussion, President Greenberg looked at the items that had more than two because we were all over the map with what we wanted. And I think that's what the conversation was. President Greenberg, you, you can jog my memory if I'm incorrect?
Yeah, I think, yes, I mean, I think certainly with the five, the top five priorities, we, we were all over the map. I think the, the proposed new priorities, we were coming in. So I, Mr. Panter, I do remember the discussion on AEL, but I kind of remember going exactly the way Mrs. Christensen was just talking about, that, that I think some of us felt that what's already in there about repealing is probably stronger. If we can get that so that it goes away forever, might, would be preferable to asking the legislature to lift it. But I, it, it's been a few weeks, so I, I can't tell you that I'm remembering everything crystal clear. Anybody else?
So what I'm hearing is nobody's in favor of changing one of those out to put this one in? That's what I'm hearing, right? Okay.
Anybody else? I mean, I, I, I could go either way, but I do think the other is a little stronger, but I'd go either way because who knows what they're gonna, what the lunch committee is going to be getting. Anybody else? So rather keep what's already here? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of possible action to appoint a delegate to serve at the Arizona School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. Hmm, so I'm supposed to ask for a motion to appoint people, but we haven't talked about it, to know who to appoint. So I'm going to put names in here and then we can switch them out. How does that sound? May I please have a motion to appoint Mr. Panter as the official delegate? And Ms. Wani is the alternate to represent Paradise Valley Unified School District's governing board members at the Arizona School Boards Association Delegate Assembly to be held on September 6, 2025 as discussed, or we'll fudge and say as we are about to discuss. Ms. Christensen?
So moved.
Okay, do we want to make additional comments? Because I'm pretty sure I know Ms. Wani wants to.
I have a comment.
Mr. Panter?
I have done in the past, and I think you could agree, I represent the district's, I, the board's ideas, not my own. But having said that, if somebody has a burning issue and a burning desire to be that delegate, I can step aside. I just, I'm willing to do it again though, also.
Ms. Wani?
You didn't see, I put a not it, like, you didn't see. So I would suggest an alternate, alternate. Please.
So you do not want your name put in as the alternate, is what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
Mrs. Christensen?
I've done it in the past, so I'm happy to be the alternate again.
Ms. Wani does not want to do it, Mrs. Christensen said she'd be fine being the alternate?
Well, that's good, because I, obviously, well, you know, just give it to some, the person who's not here.
I know.
I'm one.
Do we want to just, want to just give it to Dr. Lim?
You know, I, I'm down with that.
I'm not sure she would be, so.
What I was talking about is Sandra said.
Yes. Okay, so it appears that we will, we will have a substitute, that Mrs. Christensen is tapping in as the alternate. Any other, and you'll be the, the delegate, any other?
Thank you both for your service, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to make another?
Yeah.
Motion to change the original?
Yes, so, Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to appoint Tony Panter as the official delegate and Sandra Christensen as the alternate delegate to represent Paradise Valley Unified School District's governing board members at the Arizona School Boards Association Delegate Assembly to be held on September 6 as discussed?
So moved.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. And Ms. Chisman, we assume that you will let ASBA know, thank you. Next on the agenda is gifts and donations. We had several donors, we'd like to acknowledge a few here. Scottsdale Charles gave Desert Shadows Elementary $5,000 for the site discretionary fund. Dorito Partners gave $1,000 to Echo Mountain Intermediate for rewards for students. At Horizon, the original breakfast house, donated $3,000 for a special education structured program. Paradise Valley, Project Lead the Way, donated $10,000 to Crest. At Sky Crossing, Sparrow Inc. donated $4,000 of a Sparrow Inc. Bolt Robots and Power Pack for the STEAM lab. And at Wildfire, the PTO donated $2,000 for substitute pay for school testing. We appreciate all our donors, and if you are here, thank you. If you know anyone, please thank them. Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to accept gifts and donations, please?
So moved.
Any board members wishing to make a comment or have a question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those aye, all those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the item that we moved from the consent agenda, authorization to enter into sole, I'm sorry, I've got it up here. Sole source contracts for fiscal year 2025-2026. Miss, should I turn to Mrs. Barrigan? Well, no, don't need to have it introduced. Yes. Ms. Barrigan, you want to?
We have the sole source items that we recommend annually, and we recommend your approval. I don't know what the question is.
Okay, so, Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to approve, sorry, I want to see exactly how it's worded and proxy, uh, to approve the sole source contracts for 2025-2026 with vendors as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Christensen?
Thank you. So in general, in Arizona, we have sole source procurement, which is defined as a contract awarded for material, service or construction item without competition when the director or, in this case, governing board determines there is only one source for the required item. And I, just in general, I am adamantly opposed to sole source. While I do understand a lot of these items on the list do qualify, there are some that do not qualify as sole source. And I will give an example, for instance, on, I will, I will give an example of Infinite Campus. So Infinite Campus is a comprehensive student information system. And in the past, I have worked at the Department of Ed, and we did support IT services and constituent services. There are actually 14 CISO vendors that are certified by the Arizona Department of Ed that are supported and work with the AZ's information technology systems. Some of those include Synergy and Power School are some of the bigger ones that, in addition to Infinite Campus. Others include Genesis, Jupiter Ed, I think Mesa has their own. So I, I really do not care for sole source because I, I think it's important to have, in general, just have competition when it comes to vendors. And while I understand that a lot of our vendors, we do job order contracts, I'm not a fan of those as well. And, and I just have a different perspective because I'm coming from the business world, and these are, these are government funds, these are taxpayer dollars. And I think it's always best to have competition and just to have multiple vendors and multiple bids.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Wani?
Yeah, just in compiling this list, I guess my only question would be, you know, like, how did it get, how did we get to this list? Like, what was the process?
Ms. Wani, there are, there are various ways that it gets to the list. For example, if you look at the, I think it was the police services, police officers per jurisdiction. We, if we need somebody in, in, to, to help, to provide us with that service, there's only a few cities we can go to. In terms of Infinite Campus and everything on this list, our auditors agree that these are sole source items, and we ensure that we're following our procurement rules with all of that. So, other than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any other, Mrs. Christensen?
Yeah, I know Arizona Interscholastic Association, the AIA, is the biggest and largest, but there is actually a smaller one too. So I'm just giving some examples and- And in terms of the CISO vendors, there are absolutely 14 because I just looked it up at the Department of Ed website, and they are all certified by the Department of Ed. So I don't agree that they are, that they should be considered sole source.
Mrs. Barrigan, if there are others, can you explain how something is considered sole source? You know, because when we use the word sole, the expectation would be is that there aren't others. Is it the way that it's defined, how it's defined in the contract, the types of service? I mean, I assume there's a lot that goes on, but...
Yeah, there are various reasons, President Greenberg, that it can be considered sole source that are listed here, but sort of a deeper dive into it in terms of what we discussed with our auditors, when, I think, like specifically in the case of Infinite Campus, when the change to a new system would be so significant and disruptive, and the change of a student information system is an incredibly significant change. It manages not just our reporting of data, but our student grading and attendance and all sorts of things. And so that's why auditors believe that to be an allowable sole source. So I understand that there's disagreement with that, but it is allowable.
And I think just for clarification, and I'm diving into deep waters here when we're talking about finance, but I think that there may be a misconception on what sole source means. Sole source doesn't mean it's the only provider. It means that it is, and I don't have the technical terms, but that it's, there are other reasons, like it would be incredibly disruptive to change student information systems every year.
Mrs. Christensen?
Yeah, I can read it for you. It's ARS 412-2536, I believe, Arizona Revised Statute. Sole source procurement shall be avoided, shall, meaning, there's language in Arizona Revised Statute that say may, and then there's shall. Shall is a very strict directive. Shall be avoided except when no reasonable alternative sources exist. A written determination of the basis for the sole source procurement shall be included in the contract files, cite this article. And then there's the number. So I'm not saying that or suggesting that we should change CISO vendors because I agree that is a very arduous process. My objection is that there are 14 others, and if we look at the definition, there are reasonable alternative sources that exist, so for that one in particular.
But again, based on what you said, there are parameters that allow us to legally call this sole source.
Correct. Yep. And when statute uses words like reasonable that are subjective, there's plenty of precedent and practice and authority. The auditor general has no issue with this. You know, they see our audits. Our audits are presented to the auditor general each year, and these items are listed as sole source.
So if the auditor general had a question or comment, we would hear about it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pantera?
Well, yeah, that's, I was going to go there. I mean, a lot of these people, these groups, we voted for before, right? Some of these, like AIA, every year, don't we do that? We vote as sole source.
This comes to the board every year, correct?
And they've always passed audits about doing that. So that's always passed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Swanee?
So just for example, so we'll use the, I think, the example, Infinite Campus. Let's say in a future year, we wanted to have a board and, you know, group discussion around alternatives. That would usually, I would imagine, be a big, like, that would be a bigger conversation. And then we wouldn't get to this point, right? Like, so it would be in the works, right? I mean, if that was something we wanted to take a look at and have, like, say, as a board discussion around what are some alternatives, what are the costs? Like, that would be its own sort of discussion, and then it would never make its way for that next school year.
Correct. If that was not the direction we were moving in, we would not have it listed as a sole source.
But, right, so, but to think about any other option at this point, since there is no conversation, for example, with Infinite Campus, the cost and would be, we wouldn't even be speaking reasonable, it would not be reasonable to consider any other source unless we were going to change the entire system, which we would already be deep in that conversation.
Yeah, correct. It's far too late for us to implement a new one for next school year. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I do not hear any abstentions. Motion passes three to one. There are no cards for call to the public, and there's no items for discussion this evening. So before we adjourn, I would like to remind you that the next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, June 19, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Since it's a summer meeting, Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.